Good evening and welcome to the Ordinary Meeting of Council, Monday the 30th of June 2025. An acknowledgement of country. Lithgow City Council acknowledges the Wejreri elders past and present of the Wejreri nation, the original custodians on the land on which Lithgow communities reside. The council also extends our respects to our neighbouring nations. Declaration of webcasting. I inform all those in attendance at this meeting that the meeting is being webcast and those in attendance should refrain from making any defamatory statements concerning any persons, councillor or employee, and refrain from discussing those matters subject to closed council proceedings as indicated in clause 14.1 of the Code of Meeting Practice. I note that all councillors are present. Declaration of interests, do we have any declaration of interests councillors? No? Confirmation of minutes which were held on the Ordinary Meeting of Council held the 26th of May 2025. Could I please have someone move those? Councillor Ring, can I have someone please second them? Councillor Goodwin, is there any opposition to that? No, I consider them carried. Commemorations and announcements. On behalf of the Lithgow City Council, the Mayor expressed sincere sympathy and condolences to the families who have had lost loved ones since the last council meeting. Public forum. I have a list. And the first on my list is Erica Dawson. If you'd please come forward and speak, that would be lovely.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councillors. I'm here to speak in relation to one of the development applications. And this is the correct time to do that? Yep. So I'm the town planner and bushfire consultant for item number 2.4 for Barton Avenue. So as you would be aware, this site has a number of challenges and they were paramount in our design considerations for the development. We worked really hard to provide the development that is compliant with all of council's planning intent for the site and one that responds to the challenges of the site as well. As you have seen as outlined in the report to council by staff, the proposed development is consistent with all the planning controls for the site and is therefore consistent with council's intent for the development of this site. The proposed development will provide for housing supply in the local area, which we all know is so important at this time. Given that this development application complies with all the required planning consideration, there's really no reason for council not to approve this application. And I'm just here to answer any questions if anyone has anything they want to clarify. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any council that wishes to ask a question? No, it's pretty well exclamatory in the report. Great, thank you. Erica, don't go anywhere, you're up again. For Clarence Ash, is that right?
Yep. So I had the same role in this project as well. And I'm just here if anyone has any questions on this project as well.
Okay. Thank you. Bernie O'Regan, is that right?
My name is Bernard O'Regan and I'm a resident of Werway Estate. First and foremost, I would like to sincerely thank you for the opportunity to speak today. And I'm here to express my concerns and formally object to the development application DA 123/24. I appreciate the chance to explain the reasons behind my objection and to have my voice heard in this important matter. On January 23 of this year, a community meeting was held at both Strathlone and Werway Estates. This meeting provided residents with the opportunity to voice their concerns directly to the members of the local council as well as the developer, Mr Paul Ledger of Ledger Enterprises P T Y Limited. It was evident during the meeting that there were significant concerns regarding drainage issues affecting both the Strathlone and Werway Estate sides of the development. These concerns are particularly pressing for residents living downhill from the estates, specifically those along the Great Western Highway, Limna Street and also bounding near the LaSalle Academy. Now, the key issue raised was the anticipated increase in traffic. I had previously submitted written concerns of this matter to the council in November of last year. As part of the DA, the developer has proposed connecting Mungbinga Drive to Werway Estate via the Clarettash Avenue in Strathlone. In the DA, the developer estimates that the 54 proposed residential lots will generate 38 vehicle movements in the morning, peak and 42 in the evening. However, this figure appears to be significantly underestimated. Based on direct feedback from current Strathlone residents, both prior to and during the January meeting, there's a strong likelihood that this new connection would be widely used. With over 190 existing residences in Strathlone, it is reasonable to assume that a substantial portion of these households would choose to use the route to access the Lithgow CBD, such as the plaza, local schools and other services. This would result in increased traffic, which could place additional pressure on local infrastructure and impact road safety. For instance, exiting Mungbinga Drive leads directly onto Limna Street, which, like both streets in Littleton, is a narrow residential thoroughfare. And when vehicles are parked legally along the curb, the street is effectively reduced to a single lane passage, significantly reducing and restricting the flow of two-way traffic. This situation is not unique to Limna Street and is representative of the general road conditions throughout the surrounding area. I've witnessed several close calls on both Limna and Rabaul Streets over the years and have also seen some bad accidents at the intersection of Limna and Rabaul Streets. One particular concerning incident occurred just on December 4th of last year, where a youth was travelling west along Rabaul Street, has clipped a car which was legally parked on the side of the street and ended up on its side. New South Wales Fire and Rescue from Cook Street, number 363, attended the scene and thankfully no one was injured, but it could have even been far worse. Today I had the opportunity to speak with Mr Blaine Carpenter, Principal of LaSalle Academy on Rabaul Street. During our discussion, Mr Carpenter once again raised his ongoing concerns regarding the proposed development in the area, particularly in relation.
So there's been an extension, councillor Goodwin, councillor Statham seconded. Is there any opposition to that? No, that's carried, continue.
Mr Carpenter, one of the school's football fields already experienced flooding on the current drainage conditions. The additional water affected from the proposed development could significantly worsen the situation in fact both the school's facilities and students' activity. He also reiterated these concerns.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but your microphone isn't on, we can't actually hear you. Yeah. Thank you.
He also reiterated his concerns regarding the safety of students travelling to and from school, an issue that must be taken seriously, given the volume of young people navigating this area daily. Although Mr Carpenter has previously brought these concerns to the attention of council, I believe it is equally important to bring this matter into the public domain to ensure transparency and community awareness. I do so with his full permission and support. Additionally, I wish to highlight a significant concern regarding public safety in general and that the New South Wales Police conduct random drug testing on the Great Western Highway, just south of Caldrew Drive for the westbound traffic and north of Rabenia Drive for eastbound traffic. If the new connection were to be approved, it could enable unregistered vehicles, unlicensed drivers or those under the influence of drugs or alcohol to evade police detection, thus placing the residents in these areas at greater risk. In the executive summary provided by council, it has stated that there would be no negative impacts on local amenities. I must respectfully disagree with this assertion based on current character and usage of our estate. At present, our estate functions as a closed-off, low-traffic area that fosters a safe and supportive environment for families and residents. Children regularly play outside on the street under the supervision of their parents, which is an important aspect of healthy community life and child development. The low volume of traffic makes this possible and is one of the key features that enhances the amenity of the area. Furthermore, the estate is widely used by the residents for walking, whether as families enjoying time outdoors or individuals taking their dogs for daily exercise. This informal yet vital use of our public realm contributes significantly to the wellbeing, social cohesion and overall quality of life in our neighbourhood. Any development or change that increases traffic flow alters the street layout or otherwise impacts the quiet and safe character of the area would in fact negatively impact these amenities. Therefore, I believe the claim in the executive summary does not adequately reflect the lived experience of residents or the importance of these local practices to community life. It is crucial that any development in our community considers the long-term impact on local infrastructure and the wellbeing of residents. I respectfully request that the council give full consideration to these community concerns during the ongoing review and decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Geoffrey Dean.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm Geoff Dean, I also live in Werway Estate. Just again, thank you for the opportunity. Look, I don't necessarily oppose the development of the Clarettash Estate. I do wonder how many housing estates Lithgow needs at the moment, but I do oppose the connection of Clarettash Avenue to Mungbinga Drive. And like Bernie, I was attending the community forums where there was not one person in favour of this from traffic movement and drainage points of view. A particular concern to me was a manifestly flawed, inaccurate and potentially misleading traffic assessment submitted by the proposer, which has obviously been accepted at face value by the council's assessment officer because it hasn't been redone. So in reference to the evaluation on page two, the executive summary, the executive summary notes that numerous attempts were considered to redesign the subdivision to achieve a suitable outcome from the community submissions. And however, the R F S could not support the proposed road amendments. So the question there is, relevant to the 1997 Rural Fires Act, the 2019 Planning for Bushfire Protection Guidelines and the 1979 Environmental Planning and Assessment Act, what were the grounds and reasons given by the R F S not to support the amendments? And are there alternative options available to address those concerns other than the options supported by the council assessment officer? Regarding paragraphs three on page 44, on what evidence has the council's assessment officer based the expectation that the majority of Strathlone Estate residents would continue to utilise the highway to get to the Lithgow city centre as the distance is approximately the same as going through Mungbinga Drive? Was a survey of Strathlone residents conducted to support this expectation? Further on page 44, paragraph four, the question I have is on what evidence has the council's assessment officer based the anticipation that proposed residents within the new subdivision would utilise Clarettash Avenue to travel east to Sydney and Blue Mountains? That would avoid Mungbinga Drive. Obviously, a survey of all future residents of the new subdivision can have been conducted. So what data or evidence supports the officer's decision? Referencing page 47 relating to traffic impacts through Rabena Drive, and what evidence has the council's assessment officer based a conclusion that it is unlikely that an additional 54 lots with an optional access through Mungbinga Drive would create a high volume of traffic congestion at this intersection? When the officer has previously stated that residents of the new estate would travel east to Sydney and the Blue Mountains? Referencing page 47, paragraph two, and what evidence has the council's assessment officer based a conclusion that the through traffic flow via the connector road between Mungbinga Drive and Clarettash Avenue is more favourable for additional traffic movement from potentially two vehicles per allotment? The work time and school time movements are found to be the busiest times, so the traffic report was reflected for the worst-case scenarios. That's not really the worst-case scenario. Has consideration?
I need someone to move an extension, councillor Fredericks, councillor Ring. If there's no opposition, that's carried, sorry.
Is the traffic report really a worst-case scenario? Has consideration been given to the common knowledge that many residences now have multiple vehicle households with parent and teenage drivers? And again, I refer to Bernie's, out of that traffic assessment, 6.1 trip generation on the proposal, it says all that out. Page 48, the first five paragraphs. So on what evidence has the council's assessment officer based a conclusion? Limna Street, although narrow, is a local road network with the majority of the existing dwellings containing off-street parking via internal driveways or front lawn parking. On-street parking along the curb is sporadic and minimal, that there would be no high congestion rate from that development. Now, that is nonsense. I came through there today, there was 12 cars parked on the side of the road and probably four of them on the footpath. And that's at six o'clock in the afternoon. Trying to get through this quickly for you. In the discussions and conclusions, again, that there'd be no significant impact on the environment or the amenity of the locality, that is a complete misrepresentation. That our estate changed forever if this was to go ahead. Look, I've got a lot more I could read into that. I did supply copies of this to the council today and I did get a reply about half our school, but I don't believe the answers were satisfactory. So finally, I would ask if the councillors have had access to and reviewed the some 41 submissions put forward by the residents? Or is the scant summary of those submissions contained in this evaluation all they know of those submissions? I urge the councillors to consider and ensure that my and all other questions put forward regarding the proposal are answered to their own satisfaction, prior to making a decision on the approval of them. And once again, I thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr Dean. Mr and Mrs Robert Miller? Oh, sorry, General Manager is going to read the statement? Yep, great.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a statement from Mr and Mrs Robert Miller and Mr and Mrs Jade Taylor from South Bonefells. Unfortunately, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I would like to formally raise concerns regarding longstanding drainage issues impacting properties at 981, 983 and 985 Great Western Highway, Bonefells, and how these may be further worsened by the proposed subdivision DA 123/24. For over 30 years, residents have endured inadequate drainage infrastructure. The current half-pipe system was originally intended as a temporary solution when properties were reclassified from rural to urban. We were advised at the time that proper drainage upgrades would follow in future budgets. Unfortunately, this never eventuated. As it stands, the existing system is already under strain. During heavy rain, water overflows and backs up at key pinch points, particularly at the undersized pipe beneath the driveway of 981. This regularly causes water to flood the yard of property 983, which is completely unacceptable and only set to worsen. We are now being told that the subdivision's proposed retention pit will resolve these issues. However, even at this early stage, with no roads, driveways or hard surfaces yet completed, the system was already showing signs of being inadequate. If the pit cannot manage current runoff, how will it cope once the development is complete? There appears to be no guarantee it will be sufficient to slow or hold runoff and prevent overflow onto neighbouring properties. We are also deeply concerned about the continual flow of silty, dirty water through property 983, which has rendered the land muddy, waterlogged and unusable. The property owner cannot even maintain the land without risk of becoming bogged. This is not only a nuisance but potentially damaging to land value and future use. We had hoped these issues would be properly considered and resolved before the development application progressed to this stage. Unfortunately, we have not been consulted or approached for input and it appears no practical solution has been offered. We ask the council, one, investigate the adequacy of the existing and proposed drainage infrastructure, including the retention basin. Two, require detailed and independent hydrological reports that demonstrate no adverse impact to existing properties. Three, engage directly with affected property owners to seek first-hand input on the extent of the problem. And four, ensure that the developer is held responsible for any downstream impacts, both during and after construction. We urge you not to allow this development to proceed until a fair and workable drainage solution is in place for all affected properties. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Andrew Downs, tell us.
Thank you, Mayor and council, for the opportunity to speak tonight on the proposed heritage listing of our factory here at Lithgow. I'd say at the outset that manufacturing, defence manufacturing, can and should have a strong future here at Lithgow. We know that Australia's defence needs are changing. They are changing beyond just the type of small arms that we currently manufacture here at Lithgow. But this factory is a critical national asset. There isn't many factories in Australia that can do the type of precision manufacturing that is done right here. And when we look to the future, particularly with other defence programmes like robotics, like guided weapons, this manufacturing capability is an important part of Australia's defence industrial base. Now, I say this in no way, shape or form to diminish the views that its heritage is not important. It is. This factory produced weapons of which generations of Australians went to war with, myself included. Many of us put our life in the hands of the tools that were made here. But the reality is, the type of manufacturing that we need to do at this factory and its long-term future is incompatible with listing in the long term. Now, I appreciate others may have a different view or that the two issues of listing and manufacturing can coexist. But from the company's position, that is not correct. The first reason I would say is because this factory, most of the buildings that are disused at the moment do sit on top of legacy brownfields, legacy soil contamination that is not dissimilar to the type of issues that you'd face in any other type of brownfields industrial site in the country. To remediate that work would be challenging if the buildings themselves are obviously preserved above it because you would need to work on the soil below it. The buildings themselves that are disused are disused for a reason because they are incompatible with the type of modern manufacturing techniques that we would seek to employ at the site. There is a reason when we expanded operations, we built new facilities to the rear of the site. Ceiling, load, pylon use, all of these sort of aspects in the sites that isn't subjected to the ground soil issue is incompatible with the type of operations that we would want to conduct in the future. And thirdly, I would say that remediation to the buildings to the standard required if they are listed does come at a cost. But the so-to is of course the remediation of the ground near it.
I need an extension. Councillor Statham, councillor Fredericks, is there any opposition? No, carried, continue.
Thank you, Mayor. It is difficult though to plan for the future of this site in the long term, difficult both for the company as well as the Commonwealth under which we hold unique obligations as a company too. And council would have seen the correspondence circulated for what is classified as a strategic site. It is difficult for both of us to plan for the future of this site long term while this heritage matter is afoot. And I would say it does raise a question long term about what is the future of this site. And I appreciate that's a debate that some people in the community will have different views on. That the heritage value of the built environment outweighs the economic contribution of, you know, around 160 folk who, you know, come from here and work here, who spend here. And also of the type of manufacturing capability that, as I said, simply doesn't exist anywhere else in Australia. But ultimately, that will be a matter for others to decide. I do know that the museum matter is on the council papers, but I understand from the last meeting that ourselves in the museum have had that we are to keep those discussions between ourselves at this time, unless there's a different. A different view? No, yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and council.
Thank you. Mr Downs.
Evelyn Staff? Good evening, Mayor, councillor and community members. My name is Evelyn Staff and I live on a four-acre property, four kilometres from the township. My name is Evelyn Staff and I live on a four-acre property four kilometres from the township of Portland. Our street runs off Sunny Corner slash Portland Road. Our property is in an elevated position which gives us a three hundred and sixty degree view of the beautiful surrounding area. We are unfortunately in the designated one point eight kilometre setback area from the proposed Sunny Corner Wind Factory. I wish to lodge my objection, objection to this proposed project and also the Mount Lambie and Ben Bullen Wind Factories. These projects are an attack on our way of life and that of our surround- surrounding neighbours. We purchased our land in two thousand and twelve and proceeded to improve it with fencing, mowing, picking up thousands of rocks. We planted trees and gardens and have owner-built our beautiful forever home, which our project managed. We have embraced the rural life and involved ourselves in community projects and groups. We do not wish to be forced to sell. I am by no means against renewables, but they need to be planned and put in appropriate places away from existing residences and towns. Portland has a population of two and a half thousand people and every one of them will be impacted. The closest turbines will only be one point five kilometres from the township and even closer to the people. Of Sunny Corner, Dark Corner, Yet Home and Surrounds. We installed solar panels on our home in two thousand and nineteen at a great expense to do our bit for the environment. We've seen our feedback tariff decline from nineteen cents per kilowatt to now four cents. And there's talk of households with panels being charged to feed back to the grid. Go figure. This whole renewable shamble is not about saving the environment or making electricity cheaper for Australians. It's about overseas companies making billions of dollars at our expense. I do not want to see the forests and productive farmland destroyed and all the wildlife and birds destroyed with it. I do not want to have the constant drone of these two hundred and eighty-five metre turbines twenty-four seven. While I'm out in my garden or trying to enjoy a cuppa on the veranda. I want peace and quiet with only the sound of the beautiful birds singing. I do not want to see my friends and family's health and wellbeing impacted by these hideous eyesaws. They are already affecting the mental health of those who are dealing with this proposal. We need to stand together to fight this project before it's too late. If this project is approved, it will set a precedence for other projects to be built close to existing towns. We will have wind farms stretching from Lithgow out to Dubbo, out to Mudgee and beyond. Baffus would not be immune. These people see vacant land and think it's their right to build these monsters scouring our beautiful Central West forever. Thank you for listening for your time.
Thank you. Stuart Martin?
Yeah, good evening, everyone. Um, I'd like to also add a bit to the, uh, for the wind house. Um, I'm, so my name's Stuart Martin. I live at fourteen sixty-five Great Western Highway, Mount Lambie. Um, just down from the old, uh, service station it was in the day. Um, I just wanted to tell you like this council, can we, with our frail infrastructure of rural roads and whatever. Can we stand to have up to two hundred extra truck movements a day? Or repeat that, two hundred truck movements a day. I've got contacts that are working on the Wellington Wind Farm. And they are seeing an increase from well between a hundred and two hundred truck movements a day. Carting materials in and out of the said projects. All the workforce out there is a transient workforce at all. My mate comes from Queensland. All the people that he knows on that job are from Queensland because. The project I started to do in Queensland got cancelled, so naturally they just huddled flow. And they've all come down to this region to continue building wind turbines. All the machinery they use comes from Queensland as well. So the, the chance of getting local employment, putting out local contractors' machinery to work, whatever, is none and void. It's just not going to happen. Now, we're talking about pouring uh, seven hundred cubes of concrete here for each turbine. That's not just your little pad for your garden shed. So imagine the gear that's got to be brought in and started up to get that to happen. Once I start pouring those concrete slabs, it's twenty-four seven. Once I get, get going, it's no stopping until it's finished. So you can imagine just to keep the trucks, the, the infrastructure to keep those trucks. Or sorry, to keep that concrete getting mixed on site, it's just going to be mind-blowing. Can our rural roads handle those little, all those truck movements and all the rest of it? No, I don't think so. And once it's all said and done, they buggered all our roads, are they going to fix them? No. The people in this room at the moment, yes, they might sign off on this deal. But in ten years' time, when our infrastructure is had it, are you going to be still here to. Try and negotiate a deal to get it fixed? I doubt very much. Anyway. Yep. Sorry, I'm as nervous as anything, but I've said my piece.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on any item on the business paper? They can do now if you'd like to come forward. If not, we'll move on. Thank you. The first item of my business is the mayoral minute. I have it here in front of me. The New South Wales State Government twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget was handed down on the twenty fourth of June, twenty twenty-five. This is the Minns Labor's government third budget. New South Wales Treasurer, the dot, the Honourable Daniel Wookiee said. That the government was securing the state's economy and the essential people in it while accelerating economic growth. New South Wales state governments of the past, present and future are elected on a platform. And the budget is a clear understanding of the government's of the day's direction. As the mayor of Lithgow, I was keen to read what funding was allocated to benefit our community. So that we can plan for advocacy well in advance. In twenty twenty-five, the New South Wales state budget, the following was allocated to support the residents of Greater Lithgow. Twenty-seven point three million to establish the Future Jobs Investment Authority to coordinate. New economic opportunities in coal-producing communities. Twenty twenty-five New South Wales, twenty-sixth New South Wales budget will also, will include tw- twenty-three point three million over four years to fund the authority. Initially focusing on the Hunter and Central West regions of which Lithgow must become a significant part. Led by this council to the benefit of our local community. This initiative will be backed by the Future Jobs and Investment Fund to unlock more than a hundred million in funding. As part of this, part of its remit, the Future Jobs and Investment Authority will develop a framework to allow the funding to be stand on projects. Like infrastructure and post-mining land using planning, skills mapping, feasibility assessment and training programmes. I've already sent a letter to the Minister, the Honourable Courtney Hustos, requesting a meeting to provide a detailed update. On the recent strong successes of the Lithgow Emerging Economy Plan, as well as to advocate for the office. Of the FJIA to be located in Lithgow. Excuse me, two hundred, two hundred and forty thousand allocated under the Better Open Space Grants Programme. This is the funding for Lithgow's International Snitzel Festival. The festival is a three-year annual place activation that will transform Main Street into a vibrant pedestrian precinct. With music, culture, creativity and Christie Golden Snitzels. Sixty point three million over four years to continue the implication of safety improvements on Bell's Line Road, Australian Government funded. Nineteen point one million over four years to continue the Great Western Highway through Medlo Bar. Five point four million over four years to reopen the Warreroang Railway Station. Nine point four million, new Lithgow Fire Station, Station for which a development application is not required. Lithgow High School facility upgrades and improvements which include. School entrance refresh, library and science, technology, engineering and mathematics rooms. Two art rooms, two music rooms, woodwork, metalwork rooms and a multiple purpose hall. Lithgow High School, from the principal and teachers to the pupils, should be commended for becoming part of the New South Wales Education's Department. High Potential and Gifted Education School Partner Programme. And I look forward to seeing this progress for future generations of our local kids. The recommendation is that council note the mayoral minute on the twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six state budget. And plan for further advocacy to maximise the outcomes for the community of the Lithgow Local Government Age. Lithgow Local Government Area. Do we have any debate on this topic?
Can I just ask a question, Mayor Coleman?
Yes, councillor Goodwin.
Was anything said in relation to any, um, funds for the Wildring Valley at all in the budget?
Not that I can see, but we're happy to take that on notice if you like.
Yes, please.
Any further discussion? No, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Before we move on to the next item. Councillors, are you happy to move things by exception? I've got a list here of those that could be moved by exception. Which is. Two point one, two point eight, two point nine, three point one, three point two, three point three. Three point four, three point five, three point six, three point seven, three ten, three eleven. Three twelve, three thirteen and four point one. Is someone happy to move those by exception? Have counsel-
I'm, I'm pulling in three point seven.
Three point seven, okay. Anything, everything else but three point seven? Yep. Did you get that minute taken? Yep. So are you happy to move that, councillor?
Question, did my-
Yeah, I've got two point two for you. Yeah, and three point eight, three point nine.
Right, thank you, mate.
So. Uh, councillor Goodwin was moving that, were you? Moving by exception or was it? Oh, councillor Ring, sorry. Councillor Ring is, can I have a second please? Councillor Goodwin, if there's no opposition to those, that's carried. Thank you. And so we'll move on. So you expressed an interest in two point two. Councillor Maney, are you happy to move the recommendation?
I am, mate.
So if I can have a second for that? Uh, councillor Fredericks. All right, I'll go to you councillor Maney, if you like.
Thank you, mate. Um, I'll speak briefly to this. Um. I appreciate the work that the, uh, general manager and staff have put into considering it. Um, I think some of the key points, and they're, they're, they're important changes to how we. How we look at our economic development. I'm, I'm pleased that the economic development has a direct report to the general manager, at least in the short term. I think the key is looking at unlocking the focus on economic potential in all the directorates. Um, whether it's local procurement policy and there is that need to take very considered and deliberate actions if we're going to change the way. We purchase our services in our area. Um, I had, I still retain, and, and all of these areas do produce economic benefit. Whether it's enabling infrastructure coming from the waste and water services. Um, I do see a risk um, in the, in the director of people and services around the growth plan. Um, anyone that knows me, I've been talking to the housing strategy since I walked in the door. Yeah, we're not there yet. Um, the LEP is a critical part. We've got a number of items in front of us today that talk to subdivision options. The appropriateness of them in their localities. I need to understand how that, that'll be funded. Um, also, given there was concern within the, at the tail end of the previous term around. Uh, significant project management, I also appreciate the, the establishment of the executive team project control group. And I'm also seeing the systems and processes improvements which we were seeking. So using software like Pulse and other uh, local. Uh, systems to ensure that the council laws, as well as the council staff, have visibility of, of the status of projects and how they're travelling. Um, there obviously was considerable concern in the community regarding uh, the loss of funding. These, in every time we have a fault in, in a system, we need to have a mitigation plan and I. I appreciate the incoming general manager and the executives' attention to this. So I, I didn't think I could let it just slip through. Unspoken to and, and just, just to gain knowledge of the work that's happened there. So thank you, mate.
Thank you councillor Maney. Councillor Fredericks? You don't wish to add? Does anybody else wish to add to this debate? No? Is there any opposition? I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Two point three, integrated planning frame, whoop, any framework, any motions, councillors?
I'll move it.
Happy to move councillor Ring? Second, a councillor Maney. Would you like to speak to that councillor Ring?
No, look, it's going out in public exhibition. I think the report speaks for itself. I don't think there's need to go into detail on it.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Maney. You're happy not to? Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item? No? Okay, I'll put that to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Item two point four.
Move the recommendation.
Uh, which is the subdivision of the fifty-four residential lots nineteen Barton Avenue, Warreroang. So I have a secondary in councillor Ring. Do I have a mover in councillor Ring? Do I have someone second that? Councillor Goodwin? Would you like to speak to that councillor?
I have an amendment, Mayor. I'm foreshadowing amendment.
Would you like to put that up now? Actually, I'll go to the mover first, the councillor Ring, if you'd like to move. Uh, would you like to speak to it first? You've moved the recommended.
Sorry, I'd like to speak to it first, thank you.
Yep. Off you go.
Um, this is a difficult site and I commend the planners on the layout. They've got fifty-four lots. Had they been greedy developers, they could have got a hell of a lot more out. Some of these lots are quite significant in size. Um, I think up to four thousand five hundred square metres. And from about twelve hundred square metres up. I think they've done a good job on a very difficult site, which has had a lot of problems. And I think it'll be good for the community. We do. Have a lot of developments on the books, but some haven't been taken up. I believe this one will get taken up. It's near the lake and I think it's definitely worth supporting.
Thank you councillor Ring. Councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, no matter who, um, owned the land, they're always going to develop it into housing. Um, I'm happy for this development. It's a good development and, um, along with councillor Ring, yep, I should support it.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. Are you moving your amendment now? Are you foreshadowing councillor?
Oh, I'm happy to move it now, mate.
Oh, oh, I'd like to speak. I just have an amendment, councillor Statham. What's your amendment, councillor?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, that Lithgow City Council, that one Lithgow City Council Development Application DA two two six slash two two. For a subdivision into fifty-four residential allotments at nineteen Barton Avenue, Warreroang. Be refused in the public interest of the Lithgow City Council's ratepayers and residents, in particular those in Warreroang. Two, Lithgow City Council Code of Conduct Investigation Report two four two four be referred to assertively qualified King's Council, KC. To investigate and report back to council on taking legal action in the civil division of the New South Wales Supreme Court. To seek the formal re-acquisition of nineteen Barton Avenue, Warreroang, formerly owned by Timberfix Proprietary Limited. And now owned by the same directors under Barton Realty Proprietary Limited. And/or alternatively, on behalf of the ratepayers, seek up to fifteen million dollars or more in financial compensation. And number three, a division be called in accordance with the requirements of section three seven five, capital A, three in brackets. Of the Local Government Act nineteen ninety-three. And I move that recommendation.
Thank you councillor Tysus. I cannot accept that. Ten point eleven, direct negative is the first part. So the first part that you've moved is a direct negative in regards to what councillor Ring has moved according to clause ten point eleven. The second part is an act of disorder, fifteen eleven. So I can't accept either of those.
Uh, could I, uh, Mayor, could that be, uh, that will now be recorded in the minutes? Is that correct?
Yes, so I'm calling it out of order.
Your reply will be in the minutes?
Yes, I'm calling it out of order. First part of your amendment is against clause ten point eleven, which is direct negative. Your second part of your amendment is an act of disorder, eleven point eleven. And it goes against eleven point fifteen, fifteen eleven A and C. I'm calling it out of order. I cannot accept it.
I, I appreciate that, but I just wanted to confirm that it will be recorded in the minutes.
Yep.
And your reply to those one and two will be in the minutes.
That's up to the minute taker.
No, it's not.
It can be, we can put it in the minutes for you councillor Tysus.
Thank you, Mayor.
So we'll go over that again. Your first part of your amendment is against ten point eleven. It is a direct negative. Your second part of your amendment is an act- Your second part of your amendment is an act of disorder, fifteen eleven A and C, I'm calling it out of order. Yep, that's fine, that will be recorded. We'll go back to you councillor Statham.
This has been an ongoing situation for many years. I wasn't mayor when this came to our attention. However, I lived in Wellerawang for thirteen years whilst the lake was being built. And I think Wellerawang is a wonderful regional country town. We have to support whatever we can to keep Wellerawang and Portland and all our little villages going. And I do believe that the um animosity towards a lot of this has got to stop. It doesn't matter who's doing it. The people have purchased this in good faith. It's been a very tough time for any council that was on council at that period of time, and I'm glad I wasn't there. I will vote for this on the fact that there is a wonderful primary school. And yes, the people that might buy those blocks of land may not send their children to that school. But it is appropriate for a subdivision to be on the side of that hill. I do believe that there are so many subdivisions in the area at the moment that have been unsuccessful, they're not selling. It's a very stressful time for a lot of developers. However, I do believe with the lake will be a great drawcard. A school would be, the school will also be able to accommodate and keep their numbers going, and I wish them well. It's not an easy decision for me to do this, but I have to think of the people at Wellerawang. Hardworking, volunteering families that have ke- kept the uh wonderful little club going, Black Gold, the school and so many other activities. And I do believe that we have to have faith in uh the council staff and the work that they have done on this subdivision.
Thank you councillor Statham. Any further debate on this matter? Councillor Fredericks?
From my understanding was when this was all sold, it was based on the premise of a school being put on there with a housing estate. I understand things change. But when there are numerous mercury articles stating that fact, of course, the community is going to be outraged when that school is not on those plans. And when there is zero explanation as to why there is no longer a school on those plans. And it doesn't matter whether it's a private school for a specific religion or not, a school is a school, it's an educational safe zone. So I understand the uproar in regards to that. And whilst I personally believe it is a bit of a scummy thing to do, to propose something and then do a complete one eighty, that's out of my hands. And unfortunately, because the S D A does meet all the requirements, I will have to vote for it. But I I do think that the public is deserving of an explanation onto why what was promised is being denied.
Thank you councillor Frederick. Any further commentary before I make a statement? Councillor Marnie?
Uh just briefly, me. Um I wasn't a councillor at the time when the land was transferred. Um I won't run through a history lesson for anyone. Um I've always seen my role, I hope, as a, not in a disinterested, but a dispassionate observer when I'm making these decisions. I've read the reports. The 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 landholders, as far as I can understand, meet the requirements. And the D A that's in front of us is a legitimate one. So um I can only look at this and make a determination based on that, and that's that's what my decision would be. Um I do want to make one comment, um and it may be, I I don't want to add it as a point. Um I know councillor Ring at times has spoken to voluntary planning agreements and how they find themselves within the locality of where they are. If I could, mayor, through the, through you and the general manager, can we place conditions of that voluntary planning agreement, open spaces spent in the township of Wellerawang? Um.
Would you like an answer councillor?
Thank you, mayor.
Miss, you ready? Yep.
Uh through yourself, mayor. Uh councillor, uh V P As are arranging work for Gemli in conjunction uh in agreement with the uh applicants and proponents for the developments. Uh this uh proposal is intended to be spent in the general area. One of the constraints that we do have is that uh often uh there's a need to amalgamate uh the income from a V P A uh with other V P As to get a critical mass of funds to actually be able to either expend on uh building appropriate infrastructure, uh rather than uh let's just say, taking uh a cheap option and delivering uh infrastructural services uh that may not deliver for the long term. Uh so that's just a wider piece. The short answer is the intent uh for this V P A and discussions that have been uh are in the general area of uh Wellerawang as well.
Thank you, mayor. I'll just, I'll just close out. I I probably have more ambitious uh plans than a cheap option. I'd like to see these funds be used as seeding funding against other grant opportunities, so as co-contributions. That we can actually look at doing something a bit more ambitious in Main Street. Um Wellerawang and also the Wellerang Oval Precinct, given the glory green spot is bringing forth some fairly ambitious plans as well, which will cover the Lake Wallace precinct. I think these are really enabling moments for those townships and and I know there's a number of councillors who advocated around trying to keep that money in the local area where that that increase in population is happening. So it's just a challenge on putting probably to ourselves as a council as well as the the administration. And I'll I'll leave it to that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Marnie. Councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge councillor Tysus's um concerns. I mean, they're not baseless. Things are, were definitely not done the way they should have been in the past, and I trust that it will never happen again. But I also agree with councillor Statham, I think moving on is is the best uh measure here. Um it's a, the, look at the size of the blocks. I mean, they're 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 quite large. It's not, it's not a money grab, so I will be voting for it.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis. Any further debate on this matter? I'm just gonna make a couple of comments on this. When you walk into the, when I walk into this, when you walk into a this chamber, you walk in with a set of values. And there's nothing in my set of values that states that I cannot vote for this. This D A has been, has met guidelines. The development application was referred to external agencies such as the New South Wales Royal Fire Service, Water New South Wales, Endeavour Energy, Transport and Transport for New South Wales, and no objections were raised by the agencies. They have recommended conditions of consent. If these agencies have recommended conditions of consent, then that's enough for me, and that sits well within my values. I will be voting for this. Write a reply councillor Ring?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that on reports that we didn't debate in previous councils, it was clear and was stated, I C A C have looked at this sale, there was nothing to look at, there was nothing corrupt. That's it. Need to move on. The Reverend church didn't buy the land, Wayne and Nelson Clark did. They're no different if they're Catholic or Protestants. I'm really over this B S. I think we should just get on with this and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ring. I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? We have to clear a division. All those in favour? Please raise your hand. Councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Smith, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, councillor Coleman. Those against? Councillor Tysus, the matter's been carried. Two point five, this is a, the D A O eleven twenty five call in report. Residential flat buildings, two ten to two fourteen Main Street Lithgow. Councillor Evangelitis called this in. Would you like to lead on this, councillor Evangelitis?
I would indeed. Um quite simply, the proposed development of the car park.
Hang on councillor Evangelitis, what are you moving? I need to know. Are you moving the recommendation or?
I'm moving, I'm not sure.
Okay, so you're gonna move the recommendation?
Yes.
So note the information, determine whether or not, so are you going, do you want an onsite meeting? Yes.
Yes.
So you, okay, so let's work through this.
Okay.
So note the information provided on the development application. You want an onsite meeting to be organised by staff. And note the report on the final assessment included. Okay, I need a second before I move you on. So councillor Marnie has done that? There you go.
Okay, cool. I'll start again. Sorry. Um quite simply, the proposed development of the car park at two ten to two fourteen Main Street will mean that the Theatre Royal will never ever be an entertainment venue again. This is due to two factors, parking and noise restrictions. The Theatre Royal holds a prime position opposite Queen Elizabeth Park. It has long been the entertainment.
Yes. Well, we're not, we're not debating the development application, we're only noting the calling in.
Okay, are you happy for that councillor Evangelitis? Because we are only noting it. You get to speak against it when it, you'll get to speak against it when it comes back.
I'll save my piece of favour.
Okay, not a problem. Councillor Marnie, you've seconded that?
Uh yes, thanks, mate. Um could I just noting that
Yes, we have.
We're determining to have an onsite meeting.
Yes, my understanding is we've determined that councillor Evangelitis has determined that we'll be having an onsite meeting. That's clear in the recommendation.
Could I ask as part of that onsite meeting that um these information provided around the Bumpers Creek floodplain risk management work? Particularly given that particular space.
Are you gonna add to the recommendation councillor?
Um. Look, possibly. I it's, I feel like.
It's probably best that you do. Yeah, pointful. Are you happy with that councillor Evangelitis and councillor Marnie, Aza?
Yes, I am.
Excellent. So if you add that point.
Okay, if I could add it to point two, so it's inclusive of uh floodplain risk management uh analysis, uh given that that was the site where the the wall collapsed under an overland flow, a brick wall. So um and was then subsequently flooded. So just, just like to have that sort of information in front of the councillors when we are on site.
Okay, that's fine. So you're happy, we've included that. If there's no, is there any further debate on this? If not, I'll put it. Okay, I'll put it to you. All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. Thank you. Two point six.
Yeah, I'd like to move it with an amendment, thank you.
Sure, can I just read this out?
Yeah, I just wanted to get in early.
No problem. Uh D A one two three slash twenty four subdivision fifty four residential allotments, fourteen Clar- Claris Ash Avenue, South Bowenfells. Councillor Ring, what are you moving?
That the D A is deferred to the July meeting to allow the administration to, one, provide a detailed report on the future treatment of the retention basin and ongoing flooding on adjacent private properties. Two, seek the concurrence of the R F S in supporting a gated access for emergency vehicles through Mumbenga Drive.
Is there a second for this? Councillor Evangelitis? Councillor Ring?
Uh as much as the D A process is frustrating, we've got to deal with what's in front of us. But I'm not satisfied in the report that we have been provided, that the flooding and the retention issues have been adequately dealt with. I've visited properties that have been flooded. Those properties, we're told staff are gonna go and talk to them, they haven't, which is unfortunate. And I think that needs to happen. We need to have a good understanding. Because I don't believe it's acceptable for a developer to establish a retention pit to capture all this water. Then it runs down through private property. I just don't think that's acceptable. Um. In terms of um the vehicle access, I agree with the speakers tonight. I I can see this becoming a rat run, that's my opinion. I believe that the roads around the area are too narrow. In fact, what what we've got in front of us is a history of poor planning decisions in the past. When, I think, what is it, where a estate was developed, it was known that it was gonna eventually connect through to the other, and that road should have been dealt with then, not now. The only reason I'm proposing a gated what um access is because the R F S, this had to be reported to, have required an entrance and an exit for their firefighting vehicles. Only problem is the firefighting vehicles coming to this area will be from South Bowenfells or from Orangaroo. They're not gonna be coming up Mumbenga. But this would at least provide interconnectivity between the two areas, but it would not create a rat run. It would allow for a gate or a gated, it can be done quite attractively. Or bollards that can be locked and unlocked by the R F S in the event they need to get access. It doesn't matter if they lose the key, because they all carry the universal bolt cutters. They'll just cut it in an emergency and just go straight through. I think that provides a good solution to everyone. That's where I stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Event, councillor Evangelitis?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Ring. Um when I went down there and saw the retention basin, clearly there's um issues with that and I mean, fifty four is quite a number. And um yeah, I I definitely think we need to look at this a little bit closer.
Thank you. Any further debate on this matter, councillor Marnie?
Um I appreciate the thoughts councillor Ring's bringing forward and maybe how to to look at um dealing with that issue that the speaker spoke to. Um the convenience of running through into into the the plaza of the school zones um is certainly a risk. Um the nature of the roads that have been developed out there in isolation to each other are relatively narrow, and I agree with the speakers. It's quite routine to have people parking and and the reduction down to a single lane. I think the other issue, and this isn't so much the, in a way, the problem for the developer, but I think unfortunately Transport for New South Wales has sat out of the conversation about what are we doing with the intersections at Larsell College? What are we doing with the intersections around, uh I think it's West or First Avenue? Uh anyone that turns west onto that, it's a Russian roulette of your life. Um we've got bus shelters which obscure uh vision into intersections and we're putting large amounts of movements in there. Spoke to a hundred and ninety residents and uh I think it was Mr Oregan who spoke to multi-cars in teenage families, like it isn't just a single single car that mum and dad have and and there's the kids as well. So there's, there's a lot of issues around there and I, and I think councillor Ring's at least putting something forward we can look at. Uh in regard to the the water, um I've gone out there in in rain periods and non-rain periods. The infrastructure that's in place, particularly around nine eighty one through to nine eighty five on the Great Western Highway, is a classic undersized relic of a past land use. And what we now have is potentially significant overland flows, which are also, in my mind, potentially sterilising a private landholder who sits below the the subdivision at no fault to themselves, have a property that now is waterlogged. And that, to me, doesn't hit my fairness test. Um there there needs to be a pathway there. Um the overland flows are going to the back of some of those properties like nine eighty three. Anyone that's found themselves mapped as flood affected, understand that the insurance companies don't issue. Um so there's costs that are potentially transferred, there's also costs that potentially transferred to the public sector about trying to improve those drainage systems, and that may well be our responsibility. The other concern I've got is the Bible church down below. And in turn, the uh uh the Australia Post facilities, they all sit in the in the overland flow part. So we're growing out the catchment, and what I'm meaning by that, we're we're building impervious surfaces on what essentially was a vegetated and horse paddock of sorts. We're now putting hard road surface asphalt, driveways, roofs. I'm, I'm, I, I'm not yet convinced that the the stormwater management works are effective for that scale of hardening of the surfaces. Also note that in Claridash, the actual detention basin is perched above the level of the of the houses. So if there is an outlet failure, uh the impact on those can be quite significant. So I'm I need to be convinced about this. I'm almost sitting at a refusal point. So I, I need to be convinced about this, I'm almost sitting at a refusal point. But I'm, I'm listening to what councillor Ring suggesting that a deferral might provide an opportunity to. To address some of these concerns, uh, but there's, to me, there's, there's still question marks of third parties. Who have been directly impacted by the proposed, uh, subdivision.
Thank you councillor Marnie, any further debate on this matter? Councillor Statham?
I really value the work that has been done by the developer and the council staff, it has no doubt been very challenging. When I see forty one submissions, I think that's extremely a lot, I haven't seen that for a while. I am all, I'm very, very, um, happy to, you know, to actually support subdivisions, absolutely. But I find this at the moment, there's a few, um, challenges that I still think. People need to, uh, get together and mediate a way through if at all possible. Last our school, I've been out there a few times early in the morning, it's a bottleneck. It really has got a lot of students that get off the buses and also from vehicles. I think it's very, very important that we really look at that very carefully. The R F S have a problem with it. Um, I think the car situation, not many homes have one car these days. So, I would love to see this go through, but I don't know how we can make it so it's going to be a good outcome for council, the developer and the residents. But I think deferring it to have another meeting, uh, an onsite meeting would be very valuable. I certainly would attend an onsite meeting now to see where it is up to before it, um, continues, uh. You know, it's, it's a very costly, uh, I guess, chore to go through this again. And not be ready to accept the DA, but at this moment in time, unfortunately, I see some problems.
Thank you councillor Statham, other further commentary councillor Smith?
What I've noticed here with the discussion that's been, um, it's been noted by people in forum. And I noted myself when I went through this information myself, when I looked at the assessment report, the attachment one. There was nothing substantially for me to actually accept this and approve this. When there's no definite information on what's going to happen with that stormwater, nor those road accesses. So I agree with everybody here, I think there's a lot more questions to be answered, and I do believe the assessment report could be a lot more conclusive.
Thank you councillor Smith, any further commentary? Just for myself, yes, I agree with you councillor Statham, forty three submissions that have been received is concerning. And we do need to have a closer look at this. Councillor Ring has put a lot of effort into this amendment and he should be acknowledged for that. So I will, for this recommendation, I'm sorry, has put a lot of effort into this recommendation and he should be acknowledged for that. So I will be supporting councillor Ring in this matter. Councillor Ring, have you, would you like a rider?
No, just put it, please, ma'am.
All right, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against? We need a division, I understand, this is a planning issue? No, no, okay, um, no notice, thank you, sorry, yeah, I consider that matter carried, we move on. Uh, two point seven Lithgow Small Arms Factory Heritage listing, late report to be.
Or like the move with an amendment, thank you, ma'am.
Oh, I had something for.
Oh, I know, and I told you I'd feature.
All right, what are you moving councillor Ring?
Right.
Oh, I might have.
An entirely new recommendation, and that is that council acknowledges, one. That the former Small Arms Factory site, Talus, in brackets. Appears to meet the requirements for the state heritage listing. Two, that the preparation of a conservation management plan will determine the significance of all remaining buildings. And identify those that can be demolished. Three, the council offers to work with Talus to ensure the commercial longevity of the site to retain both jobs. And items of heritage significance.
Do I have a second for that? It's up now, I'll be foreshadowing if this doesn't get up. It's up councillors, you wanna have a look at it? So, no one seconded it laps, so I'll foresh, uh, can I put, can you please put the foreshadow motion up that I was suggesting?
Oh, no, actually, I'm happy to say.
So councillor Marnie's seconding it, but you still like to see the foreshadow? I'll put that up in, yep, I'll put that up anyway, if we can put that up. I've already called it out councillor Marnie, you're right, so the foreshadow is that. So, what, the foreshadow I've got, so there was no second, so it lapsed, so I'm now moving the following. That Lithgow City Council supports the residents that work at Talus Australia. Lithgow site by opposing the heritage listing of the site on the following grounds. The necessity to retain industrial land for future economic and employment purposes within the Lithgow region. The likelihood that any such listing and expense involved would result in the current owner deciding to abandon the site. And move the existing operations elsewhere. That heritage listing would severely constrain redevelopment options, including new defence and precise manufacturing facilities. And would directly undermine the purpose of the council's regional precincts and partnership grant application. Heritage listing would lock in an obsolete mix of buildings and site layout unsuited to modern defence. And other manufacturing requirements. And two, that Lithgow City Council advises Talus of our position. Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you councillor Fredericks. For me, it's about jobs, purely and simply. Hundred and sixty jobs, that's twenty million dollars worth of wages per year. We can't afford our past to dictate our present and our future. And it's important that we don't cut off our nose to spite our face. My understanding Talus are working with the Small Arms Factory Museum to reach a conclusion, and that's up to them to decide that. If Talus is forced into a position of walking away, then not all will be lost, the jobs and the museums, and we cannot afford that. We cannot afford that in this stage, at this stage, at this time. I understand the heritage significance of the Small Arms Factory Museum, but there's a better way to both protect. The jobs and the museum, and I believe there is a pathway to both. Thank you councillor Fredericks.
I'm in full agreement with that, it is about jobs, one hundred and sixty jobs. And a whole heap of apprenticeship, a whole heap of apprenticeships. That are becoming very, very scarce and rare in this L G A. And I'm sorry, that goes above everything else. We wanna keep our youth here, we want them to settle down, we want them to have kids, we want our population to boom. I'm getting sick and tired of people finding ways to stranglehold this town into its decline. State heritage listing would aid that. And that is why I'm one hundred percent supporting this motion for us to be opposed to the state heritage listing, and it has my full support.
Thank you councillor Frederick, any further discussion councillor Evangelitis?
Um, uh, firstly, I wanna thank and commend Talus on working with the museum and finding a way. To move forward, and I think everyone in town hopes for both the jobs that Talus provides. And the importance of the, um, Small Arms Factory Museum to stay where it is and to continue. Also wanna commend council management for offering alternatives to the options of a heritage listing. I, I won't support the, um, foreshadowed motion.
It's a motion now councillor Evangelitis.
Okay, I won't, I won't support the current motion because I think there's strong community sentiment regarding this topic. I've seen similar sites repatriated to serve the community in a broader way, and that would be my hope for the site, um. I, I mean, heritage is a, is something for future generations, um, so, yeah, I won't support the, um, motion.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring?
Well, all I've heard so far with respect to the speakers is a total lack of understanding of heritage and the constraints. Small Arms Factory was opened in nineteen twelve, it is the oldest ordinance, uh, manufacturing site in Australia. It is a part of the heritage of this community. It's not about the Small Arms Museum, I don't know where that, that idea is coming from. This is about the heritage listing of the buildings. Not the museum, that's not being listed. There was an attempt to list this site for state significance in two thousand and six. Now then council oppose it for the loss, fear of losing a hundred and sixty eight jobs. But here, we've still got a hundred and sixty jobs here. However, this morning on the radio, there was an official statement from Talus. If the state heritage goes well ahead, you potentially could lose a hundred and thirty jobs. Well, I don't like being threatened by a multinational. I'm sorry, I think the jobs are important, the idea that these buildings cannot be adapted shows a complete lack of understanding of heritage. Or can be done. We're talking about engineering solutions, that's it. And quite frankly, any reference to LEAP and, yes, let's have an advanced defence sector in the centre of Lithgow. Who actually went out and talked to the community to see if they wanted to expand it. We were a target during World War Two because of the Small Arms Factory, played a critical role. No one's gone out and talked to the community. One of the longstanding failings of the whole LEAP document and process. I'm not opposed to keeping the jobs there, but I don't like being threatened. Not by a company that's from a country where our men shed blood to defend their nation. In two world wars.
Point of order, ma'am.
Yes, your point of order councillor Tyson.
It's got no relevance to this at all.
Thank you, I'll uphold that councillor Ring.
Fine, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Councillor Ring for your comments. Councillor Statham, sorry, obviously you have next.
Uh, look, I think everybody in this room realizes the Small Arms Factory is a great tourist attraction for our area. We're very delighted to be able to have that as a tourist attraction like nobody else has got possibly in Australia. I think a hundred and sixty or a hundred and thirty, it doesn't matter anything over forty, it means that we've got secure employment. Now, I think the world of the people that run the Small Arms Factory, they're hard workers, they're volunteers. And, uh, they've done everything that you could imagine to promote and deliver tourism to our area. However, I find at the moment that Lithgow is not in a position to lose ten working positions, let alone a hundred and thirty. I did listen to this morning's news and I thought, my goodness, I thought it was about ninety odd people. I, um, am quite familiar with some of the people at Talus and, uh, I know that they're quite. Scared about what the future holds for them. So why isn't there some way that both can stay? What could we do to mediate a way through with the heritage department? And may I ask one question, please? Who suggested this in the first place?
It was actually my understanding was, I, it came from a, a concert, a. Group of people in the Blue Mountains, they actually put the submission in.
We've got Lithgow local government area, we shouldn't be listening to what's happening in the Blue Mountains, it's got nothing to do with us. We need to make sure that this does not get moved today, it should be deferred, so we can have a meeting onsite and. Get a practical way through, even if they've had one before.
We've had, this has to be done today councillor Statham, because the submissions go in by the fourteenth of July, we don't have that chance, so.
Well, if anybody here today is a councillor and is going to take notice of another council, doesn't matter that it's Bathurst, Oberon or Blaney. We need to protect what we've got here, and the Small Arms Factory is a, a tourist attraction like no other in Australia, possibly even in the world. So I believe, you know, I know there's sunbeam mixmasters there and all sorts of things besides rifles. And the world is at a point at the moment where it's tipping, so if it tips the wrong way over the next six months. At Talus will be absolutely full on. At the moment, it's difficult for them to get and maintain contracts. Well, we need to make sure that they keep maintaining contracts, but at the same time, the volunteers that have looked after the, um. You know, the, uh, Small Arms Factory have done this for years and years and years, and we should not just throw them out with the dishwater. They need to be protected, they need their heritage protected, but I don't believe they need to be heritage listed.
Thank you councillor Statham, councillor, you've spoken councillor Frederick. Uh, I'll come back to you if you, I'll come back to you in a minute councillor Smith. Yeah, I'll come back to you. Councillor Smith, would you like to speak?
I believe it's essential that we keep the job, so I agree one hundred percent with what everybody else said here. I do believe that the museum should be kept operational because I believe it's one of our better tourist, um, attractions. So if these bodies can't work together without bringing some sort of heritage listing or some other sort of situation into it. If they can't work together, then, um, I think we've got a problem. We need some sort of a, maybe a committee or something to work together on these issues, cause we don't wanna lose either of them.
Okay, maybe we've got a solution over here. Councillor Fredericks, what's your point three?
Um, the point three I wanted to add was that we request Small Arms Factory to withdraw their, um. Heritage listing application, their heritage has already been acknowledged and noted. Like, that's already there, they've already got that safety net.
Point of order, it's, it's not the Small Arms Museum, all this thing has been done by an independent person who's a heritage consultant.
It's not actually for the museum.
That's right, it's for the entire site.
Side, it's actually for the whole.
It's nothing to do with the museum.
Already been acknowledged, it's already been acknowledged.
Sorry, I've called a point of order.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to rule, I'm sorry councillor Frederick, I'm, I have to rule in, in regards to what councillor Ring is saying. It's actually for the whole footprint, it's not actually for the museum, it's actually for the whole footprint, that's why there is a concern. If the actual site, but I'll wait for my right of reply, I won't go there, cause that's not fair to everybody else. Councillor Marnie, were you speaking?
Uh, yeah, yes, please, ma'am. The first thing I note on this side is there's free employment economic points within it. There's the defence industry side of Talus. There's the economic opportunities that the Small Arms Factory Museum present. And then banging the smack of a defence industry lot is a building and hardware supply business. Now, we've talked a bit to incompatibility of future reuse of those buildings. I don't know when a pack of nails and a, and six metres of timber were ever going to be. Mobilised into a, into a combat setting from Lithgow. So, I find there's a little bit of irony in some of the conversation around, um, we can't have anyone else in the front gate. Um, I look at sites like Beverly Rail Yards and other historic in- industrial sites within. The Sydney Metropolitan have been, are being reimagined, reactivated into other industries. I, I understand Talus's preference to have defence industry. And probably not direct competitors to them sitting in within the boundary fence. But I found this a little bit one dimensional. I, I, I appreciate what councillor Ring was trying to do, which was to keep the conversation, the options open. Um, I'd probably also just like to ask a question for you, ma'am, to the staff. Whilst a submission from the Lithgow City Council will be significant, uh. Will the heritage office proceed to make their assessments regardless of that submission? Um, I, I, sometimes people afford me much more power than the bloke from the Berry Street in the Vale of Clued actually has. I'm not sure that I'm necessarily going to change heritage, uh, decisions by the state government and. The defence industry of the Commonwealth, but, um. I just, I'd also like to know where does our decision fit and how narrow is that conversation? That, that's my concern.
Mister Oldwood, would you be able to answer that, please, for councillor Marnie?
Uh, through yourself, ma'am, uh, in situations like this, the heritage office, uh, assesses, uh, submissions. From a wide range of, uh, respondents and the property owners are, are one of those. And then, uh, other, uh, interested parties, council, uh, would be one of those if we were to submit. Uh, the considerations are also taken on board by information that the heritage office, uh, seeks itself. Uh, through its own, uh, staff that undertake heritage evaluations, and if they determine to commission, uh, their own advice depending on. Uh, the, uh, the artefact or the, or the site. So, uh, we are just, uh, one of the, uh, submitting authorities. We do generally, uh, because of, we are not the owners, uh, and we are only reflecting a position. Uh, we're taken in that vein.
I'll, I'll just finish there for quick, ma'am. I, I'm fully supportive of the two hundred. I'll, I'll just finish there for quick, mayor. I, I'm fully supportive of the two hundred jobs in that precinct. Because my understanding, Timberfix employs sixty staff as well. And I think as a very modest employment base, a small arms factory could well employ ten people. So there's an employment centre there, which is multifaceted. And I just want to make sure that we what we communicate is, yes, our employment base is critical to our town. And uh, we, I would like to see whether there was a nuanced opportunity that some of those not obsolete structures were able to be retained. Uh, but still allowed for expansion of those industries. So that's, that's my only comment. I'm trying not to appear to be sitting on the fence on this. I'm being quite honest that I I think one, one thing could become one dimensional, we end up with, this is it. And it may just stay there as a vacant block of land for the next thirty five years whilst the defence industries don't look for expansion. Or they may move to Fenella or Victoria. And um, so they're the challenges for us.
Thank you councillor Marty for your commentary. Any further commentary on this? Councillor Goodwin, did you want to say anything?
Not much, um, Mayor Coleman. I, I'm sure that Talus, um, i- if they um get the heritage listing dissolved or it doesn't go through, I'm sure they're going to um, to plan and decide. Um, with um, that preserves the site and respects the site. I'm sure they'll do that. I mean, that's just being a good social sense. I'm sure if that happens that we'll still preserve some of the heritage of, of um, the site.
Thank you councillor Goodwin. I'll just wrap up by saying, look, I understand and I respect councillor Rings and councillor Evangelite. Evangelitis's commentary and perhaps they, you know, in the future, heritage listing is an option. But at the moment, I don't feel as though is it, that it's an option. Our options and our focus has to be very clear. Employment is what we need. Employment is what we need to work towards. Employment is what we need to keep. There are twenty apprentices at Talus, my understanding. We need to ensure that they have a future. I honestly believe, and I will hold them accountable myself, that Talus will work with the Small Arms Factory Museum and ensure that it's viable going into the future. They will work with them to make sure that they can coexist. We need to protect those that work at Talus. I'm gonna put the motion to you. All those in favour? All those against?
Call the division.
All those in favour? Councillor Coleman, councillor Statham, councillor Goodwin, councillor Smith, councillor Fredericks, all those against? Councillor Evangelitis, councillor Ring, councillor Marty, councillor Tassus? You're abstaining. Okay. The motion's been carried. Thank you, we move on.
Call a five-minute recess, mayor.
Absolutely. Five minutes, please councillors.
No opposition, that's carried, we're moving on. Two ten, making of annual rates and charges. Twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, any motions councillors?
Um, I'm happy to move it.
Thank you councillor Ring, you're moving what's on the.
Moving what's on the paper.
Do I have a second please? Just wait for some. Well then we.
Oh, well, that's a problem.
Councillor Fredericks, you put your hand up, I'm gonna grab you.
I'll second it, it still looks like alien hire list to me, but I'll second it.
That's lovely, okay councillor Ring.
Look, although I understand the need for slight increase in water charges, it doesn't mean that I'm happy with it, I'm not. Um, I've been pushing for a long time, since the last, last council, that we do have business cases and reviews. Of the fees and charges, particularly significant services like water. And. To a credit, the director of finance um has taken that aboard and there is work being done with Mr Trapp. And it will be reported through the finance committee, the finance committee. Over the term of its um, the council, we'll be looking at some of the fees and charges. And looking at the business cases to make sure that we're satisfied with it. It'll give, give the councillors a level of audit over the fees and charges we haven't previously had. Whereas around eight hundred fees and charges. Um. You can't go through all of them, but we do need to go through certain ones, just so we're comfortable with. How they've been costed, what the increase is, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you councillor Fredericks.
Um, I just did have one question going through it, um, I know that we were in discussions of. Designated certain pieces of property as industrial later on down the track, whereabouts will that fall into this?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um, so once, um, if when we have a planning review, um, rates are based on usage rather than the um. Uh, planning instrument that, um, so designing, so it will depend on when the zoning occurs. When there's um development and once the use changes, that will then change the rating category and therefore which rates apply. Um, so each um year we review the rates, look at the balance of our um distribution of the yield. Based on um projected usage of those properties and we have time to consider and make tweaks. Um, as we need to, as substantial changes come through, um, so for this year coming up, we've got a general evaluation. That will change um substantially, um, how the distribution of the yield occurs, so therefore it's pertinent to look at it more in depth this year. Um, should there be a major um zoning change and therefore usage change, it would be pertinent to look at it again at that point as well.
Thank you councillor Fredericks, thank you, Mrs Browning. Any further debate? Yes, councillor Statham.
Uh, yes, could you please explain the wind power generation? Exactly what that means to people listening and watching tonight.
Mrs Browning?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um, yeah, certainly, so that's an indication, so obviously that won't occur until the wind towers are in operation, that land changes use. Um, so that's an indication that there's a, a higher capacity to pay and potentially a higher demand on the infrastructure. So therefore the allocation of rates burden would be um proportionately moved towards those wind towers.
Can't hear you councillor Statham.
Uh, thank you, uh, could you please provide to the public in some way, I don't know, on, on your website or whatever? I've been asked a lot about this yesterday and I couldn't answer the question, so could you please advise through the council website? Exactly, uh, the costings of what an approximate would be, if some wind farms are on that property. You know, what will it cost per one or per ten, because people do not know, they don't know about this, they're going off about it.
We take that on notice councillor Statham, we come back to you, because we need to work through.
Farmland, um, people are outraged by this, I've got to tell you, I don't, I just want to know how many small farm disaffects. In our local government area.
Thank you councillor Statham, do you have an answer? Would you like to take that on notice?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um, so there's about twelve hundred farmland properties, the majority of them aren't being affected through the check, the, the new policy that came in last. Council meeting, um, so of those, we're not anticipating a big shift, um, so and there's no substantial change in the rate. In the dollar, so, um, obviously, once the revaluations come through and we have a more, greater understanding through the farmland application process. We can obviously um take consideration of how that distribution occurs and what impact might occur at that point.
Councillor Statham, we can't hear you, I'm sorry, your microphone?
Sorry, one more question, that what is the smallest and the lea- the least land you can have to be rated farmland? What is the, or what is the largest, is it going to be twenty five acres or five acres, what, what is going to be the relevant. Cost per acre or hectare? These are questions I was asked yesterday.
Can you take it on notice?
Yeah, I might have to take that one on notice, there is no, um, there's a guideline in terms of area, but that's more to do with. How you can run a subs- like a farm needs some area to run a farm on, but that depends what farm activity's been undertaken, there's no maximum. Um, in terms of the cost per acre, there's, there's been no, um. Real work onto what a cost per property, per acre, per size is really, uh, has on a council, most councils don't have that cost. Because it depends on how the landowner uses their property, so whether they've got multiple cars, whether they travel a lot. Um, et cetera, et cetera, so there's no real cost breakdown in terms of what each property costs council, and that's not sort of the mechanism. On which rates are levied on either.
Thank you councillor Statham, is there any further debate on this topic? Yes, councillor Tassus?
Thank you, Mayor, nor- normally, uh, in these reports, we have a, an average of what the residential and the business rate payers will. Uh, be seeing increased this year, I was just wondering if I could run through the residential, what, um, normally I think we either run on a seventy thousand dollar block. Or, I, I don't know what it is at the moment, but whatever the average is for residential land in Lithgow. What, what is the increase that in dollar terms that we're looking at in regards to their rates?
Mrs Browning, do you have?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um, so the average of the national yield increase is four point one percent. Um, so I'll have to, for a further breakdown, I would have to, um, provide that out of session, so I can circulate that around.
Looking if I may, uh, what the rates are, uh, i- the increase in water rates, the sewage, the garbage and the stormwater, I understand tonight. In the report that it indicates that there's no increase in stormwater.
It's legislated, so it's a fixed amount.
So it's a, it's a nil, yeah, thank you, but the idea being is that normally what, in the past, we've had a situation where. For the average residential rate payer on X amount of dollar block, it used to be seventy, I think it went up fairly high, this is the increase across the board.
Yeah, certainly, we can provide that based on, on the average property value.
In the business if you would too.
Thank you councillor Tassus, thank you, Mrs Browning, any further commentary on this matter?
Just, just one.
Yes, councillor Goodwin?
Um, uh, it's back on the wind generation, um, from my understanding, if. If someone has a farm, they might put a, and, and it's, they class it as a farm. And they're gonna put a wind tower on it, when the wind tower's built, the farm, it's gonna change zone into a different zone. And land use to a electrical generation, and that will be the predominant note, is that.
Oops, um, you ran into him, are you okay? Yeah, Mrs Browning, can you answer that?
Uh, through you, Mayor Coleman, so what will happen is generally those wind towers are leased, so what happens in rates, you can actually subdivide the land, you get a subdivision. Based on, uh, for valuation purposes, um, so that would be a commercial lease with that energy provider. That then would be rated, um, separately to the farmland, so it wouldn't be on predominant use, it would actually be a subdivided section now. Um, in, based on the lease, um, dimensions.
You happy with that? Um, any further commentary or debate on this matter? Councillor Ring, write a reply?
No, put it, please.
Okay, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Two eleven, contractor variation for new Lithgow sewage treatment plant inlet works. Uh, any motions councillors? Page fifty nine. Don't all rush it at once. Happy, councillor Marnie's happy to move?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Councillor Goodwin's happy to second. Councillor Marnie, would you like to speak to this please?
I won't speak to it in any detail, but I'd just note that the variation is, is funded from our sewer fund reserve, so. So it's, um, it's, it's got a, a resource to match it.
Thank you councillor Marnie, councillor Goodwin, would you like to make any commentary? Okay, councillor Marnie, is there, is there any further debate on this matter, councillor Ring?
I, I just wanted to point out for anyone watching that the, because there's a. It is a significant variation and it's got to do with, um. Poor quality of the land and having to put in deeper piers, I think this group here is, down to thirty meters to hold structure. So, it wasn't there earlier, once the J T studies are done, it's found the problem. Um, because when I saw it, I thought, my god, that's a lot, but once you read it, that it's, it's clear that it's got to be done.
Thank you councillor Ring, is there any further debate on this matter? If not, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Two eleven, which is the higher purchase of landfill plant at Lithgow Solid Waste Facility. Two twelve. Sorry, thank you for correcting me, two twelve, do I have anybody that likes, is there any motions or anybody like to move what's on?
I'll move what's on the paper.
Thank you councillor Ring, uh, can I have a second please, councillor Marnie? Any debate councillor Ring, would you like to speak to it?
No, look, I think dry, dry hire is the best way to go, I think we've got a, a good outcome, we're dealing with at least one local company. So I think it's a good outcome for the community and council.
Councillor Marnie? Any further commentary? I'll put it to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, two thirteen, main street slip resistant treatment options. Paper, page eight sixty eight, any motions councillor Fredericks, you're moving what's on the page, let's go to that. Excellent, can I have a second for that please, councillor Marnie, councillor Fredericks, you'd like to speak to it?
But i- it's just a temporary solution, um, well, I couldn't really say temporary, it's gonna be. Uh, it's gonna be there for a while, but, um, it is a safer alternative than leaving it as it is. And it's not going to severely impact the bank, but it is going to provide a safer. Path for people to walk on and, like, I was in the meeting when it was, when it came up and. It was the better idea out of the three that we were given.
Thank you councillor Fredericks, councillor Marnie?
Uh, just to support what councillor Fredericks is saying, it buys us some time to look at how we fund. Uh, a complete renewal and it provides a, a safety option there, as long as we can continue to monitor the changing. Surface shape of the papers, but, um, I thank the staff for getting, bring forward what's a relatively inexpensive solution.
Thank you, any further commentary on this item?
I just wanted to say that if you want to see what it looks like, just go outside Barrett's. And there's a section there which has been done, so I can be seen how it stands up in the weather. And look, it's definitely a better product than using vitamol.
Thank you councillor Ring, uh, write a reply councillor Fredericks, you're happy to, yep. Okay, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, we come right down to three point seven, I understand that you pull this out councillor Tassus, is that right?
Yeah, thank you mayor, uh, regards to the background of discussion of item seven point five golf club management meeting with Mr Chris Neville. Uh, Mr Neville's provided me with an email that he's quite happy for me to read out in regards to the meeting. And I'll be foreshadowing a, a motion when it comes up. Um, uh, Mr Neville said, Martin, during my discussion with J E, which is the. Mr Redgum, I put forth an option for my company to take over the maintenance of the golf club. And also appointment of a golf pro to grow and develop the game for a total of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars per annum, payable by council to my company. In return, I would collect membership and green competition card fees and offering back the council a hundred thousand dollars minimum, depending on membership and rounds of golf. If the mem- if the numbers I have been provided with are correct, as in the, the rounds, how many golf, how many golf rounds have taken. That could get to a figure of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per annum, that would sa- then save the council three hundred thousand dollars per annum on their gazetted figures. Of the, this next financial year budget, over the five year term, this can be a saving to council of one to one point five million dollars.
I'm sorry to interrupt you councillor, um, Tassus, but what are you moving? Are you moving what's on the page or are you changing it?
No, I'm, I'm mov- I'll be moving mayor, uh, the recommendation with a point four.
Yep.
That council, uh, uh, immediately advertise the, uh, lease of the, uh, Lithgow Golf Course.
Oh, okay, do you have a second for that? Councillor Fredericks, all right, sorry to interrupt you, I just didn't know what you were doing.
Um, uh, furthermore, um. Whilst the facility, uh, is managed properly in accordance with industry best practices by qualified professionals. I see that the golf club in the last four months has not put forth any business plan to increase a better return to council for course maintenance. As they stated they would when you raised, as in the, uh, I raised the cost originally in the council meeting back in January, February. My proposal would be, this is Mr Neville, my proposal would be a far better financial option for both parties. Let, less cost to council, more return on investment through my company conducting industry best practices. By qualified professionals and better playing conditions for golfers, ultimately, the one to one point five million dollar saving to rate payers. Of the, uh, L G A should be the focus here, not people's agendas. I mentioned in my meeting with Mr Redgum, I would be more than happy to present my proposal to all councils in person. I feel that all the discussions, points discussed at that meeting have not been addressed with councillors, including transparency of the discussion. There's been no capital expenditure or improvements within the facility, that's the Lithgow Golf Course, since council took over control of maintenance. If half a million dollars, five hundred thousand dollars was offered to my company, I would be spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that on improvements and ensuring the safety. Of the community that is currently a liability to council. The facility requires a capital expenditure budget to improve, to increase safety, playability, quality service through surface levelling, drainage, et cetera. And any, uh, capital expenditure on improvements would encourage more patronage, uh, and more through the facilities and more, uh. Money back to council if done properly, it could really minimise council's, uh, input of money significantly. And, uh, I've, I've indicated, uh, uh, if Mr Redgum could also provide a report on that meeting and. Where we're up to with the processing with the golf club, and I note that the, that we met with the golf club back in mid February, if I, if I stand corrected. And we're still, um, the thirtieth of June and we're still haven't done anything.
Before councillor Fredericks, um, seconds it, I'll just get the general manager to make a comment.
Uh, through you, Mayor, I just, um, with apologies, um, point, uh, three in the recommendation. That's actually the subject of a separate confidential council, of a separate confidential report, so it, it should be removed.
Can we move that councillor Tassus, are you happy to do that? So, point three could be removed please. Separate item, yeah, so we just got one, two, three. Can't hear you, sorry.
I also note, Mayor, that the, this lease has now gone more than two years over and above what it was meant to be, I think it's on a month a month at the moment, has been for nearly. Over two years, so it's point, it's really timely to get this moving along and get a five year lease.
Thank you coun- so councillor Fredericks, oh.
Uh, well, I'm open to anything that helps keep coffers in our own little bank. And something that will work for all parties involved. My goal here isn't to have the golf course shut down or anything like that, it's just to find a way to. Keep things rolling in a sustained way and after the reports that we had previously, council can't keep doing what it was doing. It's just unsustainable for us.
Thank you councillor Fredericks, count, um, Mrs Browning, did you want to make a comment regarding that?
Through you, Mayor Coleman, um, there has been a business plan submitted by the golf club that has been, is on, currently being considered by council staff. Um, and, um, we have prepared a draft lease, um, and, um, have been in discussions with the golf club. Um, I'd also like to note that, um, a payment to an organisation to maintain the golf club. Would actually not save council money, because a lot of those costs that are allocated to the golf club that's been reported. Would actually be redirected elsewhere, unless we, um, dismiss staff or, um, got rid of this plant. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that those costs would still be incurred by council.
Thank you, Mrs Browning, any further debate on this? Councillor Ring?
Yeah, I'm not gonna support it, look, I'm sorry, we're negotiating good faith, the fact that it's been stalled. Last few months is because we lost the property officer, actually two. I believe that, um, it's getting very close to being signed. As for agendas, sorry, we're, we're gonna pay someone to do the work, that's not leasing it out. They should be paying us if they want to take it on, um, at the end of the day, I'm, I'm happy with the arrangements as they're going, I'm, I'm not gonna support this.
Thank you councillor Ring, I'm gonna move an amendment, I'm gonna.
Question, Mayor.
Yes, your question?
We have to advertise this or not, or we're just doing it, uh.
That's a good question, can we get someone to respond to that?
Yeah, through you, Mayor Coleman, it would be advertised, um, so the proposal to lease to the, um, um, golf club incorporated Lithgow Golf Club would be advertised.
So, all right, I'm gonna move the, I'm gonna move an amendment that the original recommendation is supported, bar three. So that, one, council note in minutes of the infrastructure committee held on the third of June. And two, subject to surface level assessment of heritage and environment concerns, council provide a one-off maintenance service for the land surrounding the old. Pottery building, building, sorry, and full stop, so I'm moving an amendment.
Happy the seconds.
All right, so I'm moving that, I'm second, any further, I'm not gonna speak to it, I'm just gonna move that, would you like to speak, ca- I'm gonna reserve my right.
My, no.
No, you have it, is there any further debate on the amendment? No, I'm gonna, should, speak against it councillor Tassus, no, on the amendment?
Uh, no.
No, all right, I'm gonna put the amendment, uh, all those in favour of the amendment? All those against, declare that carried, the amendment now becomes the motion. Would you like a write a reply councillor Tassus? I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, thank you. Three point eight, councillor Marnie, you asked for this to be called out, so. Would you like to, one, move a motion, two, speak to it?
Um, I am happy to, um, move the existing recommendation. I just, I, I think it's something that we need to look at each time the Eric committee comes through, I just.
Hang on before you move on, I just need a second, councillor Ring, thank you, sorry, councillor Marnie go.
Um, just where we do get signalling of risks, that we need to, um. To make sure it, it's understood by the, the council group, but also that the public understand those. Uh, changing risk profiles, I'm just noting that there's a change in risk profile surrounding compliance risk due to recruitment issues. Reputational risk due to level of code of conduct complaints related to social media interaction, so. They, they, they carry costs with them and, um. And, or they carry productivity issues, when we come to, and I'm prone to wanting to. Champion community projects, I will ask. If we can have an understanding of some of the, um, the costs of code of conduct complaints. Actually made available to the councillors, um, these costs. Draw down on our ability to respond to community initiatives, um, I'm not sure if that, that figure is available.
Yeah, I'm not sure either, can we get a response to that?
On notice, so I accept that it.
No, I'd like a response myself councillor Marnie, if you're, if you're happy for us to ask that question, general manager?
Uh, through you, Mayor, we would be able to provide us a summary, uh. Well, I guess for the twenty twenty four, twenty five year, if, if that's what you're asking for. We would do that in the format that we do the annual return to ensure confidentiality is maintained.
Okay.
You happy with that councillor Marnie?
Yeah, I'm happy with that, thank you.
Any further commentary on that? No, you're right, okay, uh, councillor Ring, any commentary on this matter? Okay, any further debate from anybody else? No? All right, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, councillor Marnie, you also requested to speak to three point nine, would you like to move the recommendation? Or do you have something else?
Again, I'm happy to move the recommendation, I would just ask.
I just need a second.
Uh, sorry.
Councillor Ring, righto, off you go.
Um, again, we've got a couple of council owned buildings that, uh. Not call it transitioning how they, they were used, obviously the Hoskins, uh, institute is now vacant, I understand as well. Um, both as the chair of the finance committee from an income generation, but also I think. In the community development into the, the spectrums, I'd like to have an understanding what, what the timeframe is that. These two buildings will sit in that transition phase or in fact will sit vacant. Um, so, um, so I'd, I'd like to get some sort of information back at the next meeting if that was possible.
Thank you councillor Marnie, can we have someone respond to that? General manager?
Uh, through you, Mayor, yes, we can definitely provide an update, we'll put that on the agenda for the next emerging economy committee meeting, which is next week.
You happy with that councillor Marnie? Councillor Ring? No? No, any further commentary on this item? Okay, great, put it to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried. Thank you councillors, we're now up to questions we've noticed, so, uh, five point one. Councillor Tassus, heavy vehicles on Muscat Parade, Martini Parade and Bayonet Street, I noticed that there's, your questions have been. Responded to councillor Tassus, do you have any questions regards to that? Matt, you're happy with that? Okay, great, okay, then we're up to. Five point two question we've noticed councillor Goodwin, letter to the honourable Andrew G regarding main street pavement funding, do you have any questions regarding that? Councillor Goodwin, you're right.
Just wanted to, to know what we've said.
Yeah, you're happy with the response? Okay, great. Excellent, now we come to notice the motion, six point one, uh, councillor Tassus, uh, uh, I'll. All yours. Now, you've got a motion, what would you like to do with your notice of motion, six point one, you move, what are you moving, your motion?
Just move that the report be noted, I thought it was a question with notice.
Okay, that's all right, and do you have a second for your notice of motion, councillor Fredericks? So you're speaking to that councillor Tassus, uh, councillor, all right, so you're moving that the. Council, be, be port, be noted, okay, if there's no discussion on this matter?
Just clarification, so it's just to note the report.
Yes, that's what councillor Tassus is stating, yep, so if there's no, is there any discussion on this matter? No? Okay, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against, declare that carried, notice of motion, uh, councillor Evangelidis, council renaming. Up to you. Up to you, um, councillor Evangelitis, this is your motion. And you'll need a second, uh, councillor Fredericks.
Thank you, um, I'll just read what's here for the people out there that might be watching, the one or two people. In a previous council meeting, the majority of the councillors objected to my request to include Lithgow in our tourism campaign rebrand. Whilst disappointed in the result, I also accept this is the will of the community for their chosen representatives. I don't wish to undermine the decision and with the adopted branding, accepting this reality. I think it's important for Lithgow council to make every effort in order to support this new direction and strategy. The renaming of Lithgow council to Seven Valleys council would aim to do just that. This action would help establish the perceived need for a fresh start and point to a new direction. The arguments to not include Lithgow in our tourism branding can easily be applied to the naming of our council. It was noted from the public forum in a previous meeting, it's not Kotuba council, it's Blue Mountains council. It's not Maruchidor council, it's Sun, Sunshine Coast council. Many other councils have changed their name over the years, some through mergers. Others seeing a, a need to move at the times and choose a name that best represents their region. This is the, the time, um, we're about to redo our signage and websites. The, the rebrand doesn't need to be a financial burden, it's one of those things that you do in stages when updates are, are needed and necessary. Um, the renaming of this council would be a major news story, the dollar worth of that publicity. In letting the state and Australia know would be considerable, but more importantly, we'll start educating the state. And everywhere that, just where the seven valleys are, um, as I mentioned previously, we, we, we don't have the budget to bring. Education and, um, and this rebrand to market, so I'm just trying to think of ways we can do it. Um, we're about a budget, um, if we're gonna run it to Seven Valleys, we should do it properly, let's put it on the map. Otherwise, the whole rebrand would have been a waste of time. So my recom- recommendation is that Lithgow City Council changes its name to Seven Valleys Council.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, councillor Fredericks, you second this?
Yeah, um, just to begin with, is it okay if I add a point to it, that's up to the mover, yeah, I know. Um, the point was just, um, could we put it on public expedition first for community input?
That has to, that would have to go out if it got passed anyway, my understanding, I might be wrong, councillor, is that correct? Did you wanna just make sure that I am correct?
Uh, any, uh, through yourself, Mayor, uh, the office of local government, uh, generally manages, uh. Name changing for local government areas or councils, uh, under the required regulations and then. Uh, through recommendations to the minister of local government, uh, one of those requirements is, uh, strong demonstration of engagement and consultation. Uh, so any name change for an L G O council, uh, we would have to demonstrate how we've undertaken that and we've put a program in place for engagement.
That's, yep, okay, so it would happen anyway.
Right, now, the reason why I'm seconding it is because I actually like the idea, um, for years. The villages and the smaller townships have complained that everything is Lithgow focused. Going with Seven Valleys, it's more inclusive and Lithgow doesn't exactly have the. Best reputation behind it, whether it's our industrial heritage, our polling, whatever. I believe that going with council going under Seven Valleys is more inclusive and it does open up more avenues for us to do. Tourism cor- collaboration with other districts as well. So I'm all for it and I think it would, new council, new council name, why not, let's try something different.
Thank you councillor Frederick, any further debate on this matter, councillors take them?
Yes, I totally agree with the two previous councillors that have spoken. Uh, the people that have told me it sounds like a drink, V Valley. Um, I don't know whether they've, um, condensed that into just, uh, two names and. Um, V Valley, whether it's the, uh, Seven Valleys or the V Valley. I think it's ridiculous not to have Lithgow in it, are we ashamed of who we are? Perhaps we are, because I've never known anyone to have a, uh, you know, orange is orange, Bathurst is Bathurst, Blaney is Blaney. And on their entrances and that, you know, they know, people know where they're going through, they know they're going through. So where's the Seven Valleys, people are going to be driving through to the mountains or driving through to the west. And, um, assign V Valley or V Seven Valleys. Anyway, that's only my opinion.
Thank you councillor. Thank you, councillor Ring.
Uh, no, I'm not gonna support this, um. A name change is not gonna to, to influence perception of outlying areas that Lithgow is Lithgow-centric. That's not gonna change, that will only change by our actions and interacting with the broader communities as a council. Which hasn't always been done effectively in the past. In the report, it states in twenty sixteen, Blacktown Council, hundred thousand dollars for consultation. Here, you're probably gonna be looking at about a hundred and fifty thousand, this is not a cheap exercise. We don't have the sort of money to waste on this, it's not necessary. And at the moment, after having met with what was two ministers last week, the senior ministerial advisor. Lithgow and all the baggage that name can take in a tourism area. Actually works to our benefit for our future. In terms of pulling at the heartstrings, that, you know, it's a strong labour. Heartland or background, yes, I'm choking on this, okay, um. But the birth of heavy industry occurred in Lithgow. We've carried fifteen percent plus of power generation in this state. That resonates in parliament, both federally and state. We need to work with it, down the track, maybe we can change it, but not for the foreseeable future. And only when we've got a hell of a lot more money in the kitty, I wouldn't wanna stress out our finance director.
Thank you councillor, councillor Goodwin?
I think this has merit, um. I'd like to see the, uh, the Seven Valleys advertisement campaign, um, kick off first and see how we go with that. And, and if that, um, if that goes very good with Joe, assuming it will. Um, then I think we can absolutely revisit this, I, I think this definitely has merit. But, um, I'd like to see that, uh, advertising, uh, the, the advertising campaign. Start the campaign first, and also can the government have funding to assist us with this?
I'm not sure. Councillor, uh, general manager, would you like to comment?
Uh, through you, Mayor, I think that is unlikely, it, it's, I'm not aware that there ever has been similar. Grants would only be in the case of a, of an amalgamation that the government forced that. There'd be assistance with no changes, I think.
Thank you, would you like any more commentary, councillor Goodwin? Any further commentary on this, councillor Marnie?
Um, I'm gonna go down a fairly, fairly boring rabbit hole, um. I agree with councillor Ring, maybe in time. Uh, but just knowing the amount of money that gets spent on logo, uniform changes. Uh, vehicle detailing, all of that stuff is enormous. Um, the tourism committee's been talking to us about, we need to get out there and. And get the marketing budgets right. I, I have some problems going back to those community representatives, say, look, we've sort of got what you were saying, but we've decided. We're gonna change our letterhead, um, I appreciate, uh, councillor Evangelitis. In his approach to things where we've made a decision as a group. And he's taking the group decision forward. Um, I just don't know that we're in the right financial state to bankroll the change. But it may be a change that comes in, in some time. But, um, at this point in time, I can't support it and purely on that nuts and bolts, dollars and cents issue.
Thank you councillor Marnie, any further debate?
I can't support it either councillor Evangelitis. I think it's bold, I think it's creative, but when we would, when the deputy mayor. And the general manager and I were down in Canberra at the national assembly. When they called for motions to be second, or when I moved a procedural motion. And I yelled out Lithgow, New South Wales, everybody knew where that was. And the president of the national assembly was from Queensland and he didn't blink an eyelid. When we walked into the senator's office and we told them we were from Lithgow City Council. They knew where we were from, there's two campaigns currently running concurrently. You've got the Seven Valleys tourist campaign that's running over to this side, bringing people in. But you've also got the very important political campaign running on the other side. Where we're trying to ensure that we have jobs for the future and we tap into what we need to tap in. And that's where I sit, I sit with encouraging the federal government, the state government, taking notice. Of the fact that Lithgow needs support in moving towards jobs of the future, so. I can't support it at this stage, I also can't support it because at the moment, we don't have the budget for this sort of thing. If it goes out to full consultation, we just don't have, sorry, if it goes out to consultation, I've got the flu, sorry. We just don't have the budget for that, so I won't be supporting it, I'm sorry. Um, is there any further commentary, would you like to write a reply?
Um, you, you have, the, the talk of money's an interesting one. Last term, this council spent two hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars on code of conducts. With zero success rate, now, that's something the community and councillors need to acknowledge when talking about. Wasting money.
Councillor Evangelitis, I just need to bring it to your attention, mentioning the code is actually against the code. Yes, so tread very lightly.
I'm just, um, okay, so.
Where would, where would, where would mentioning, what he's mentioned has got nothing to do with it?
I'm just saying tread lightly, that's all.
I'm just talking about wasting money.
He's just talking about the cost.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying tread lightly, please, that's all.
I also find it a little bit hypocritical that we expect to engage the visitor economy to entice people to move here under one name. Yet manage, change and govern under a different name. This, this whole no- notice of motion was to, to show that hypocrisy, I believed. Lithgow should have been included in the tourism, now I think that we need to change our name, um. For all of the reasons I was told why Lithgow shouldn't be in the tourism. Um, and as far as the budget, we don't have a budget to bring Seven V to market. It's, it's in the papers here, we don't have a budget, I'm just trying to think of ways of getting Se- Seven Valleys out there. Um, by doing this, but, you know, obviously it's something that, um, the councillors will now decide, thank you.
Thank you councillor Evangelitis, I'll put that to you, all those in favour? All those against? I'd clear that loss, um, we move on, thank you. Um, I have a notice of motion, councillor Evangelitis, event, expression of interest, Iron Fest. Uh, councillor, you're, do you have a second for this? Councillor Marnie, great, thank you.
Once again, Old Street What's Here, um, recently, the events working group received expressions of interest for our event strategy. Sixty grand had been made available for events to drive the visitor economy and increase overnight stays. We had twenty-two proposals, one of which included Iron Fest, sadly, Iron Fest was not suggested by management as a tier-one choice. And not recommend, recommended to receive funding. I would suggest that Iron Fest ticks every box that these funds are designed for, the event organisers have delivered successful events. In and out of the locale for many years, um, and, uh, for me, this is a no-brainer, Iron Fest should be supported by this council. Um, this count, the previous council gave two unknown operators forty thousand dollars over two years to build a local event. They then choo- chose to move that event, now that wasn't council's fault, it was the organisers' choice, but nevertheless, that grant was to encourage a future in Lithgow. Iron Fest could have easily moved their event to any council, they would have loved to have had them. Um, but the val- organisers see the value of keeping it in Lithgow. And Iron Fest are proposing to hold it a showground, which for me is the perfect location, um, due to the infrastructure of Lithgow. Um, this money, it's a mod- it's a modest ask, it's twenty thousand dollars and that will help them cover the traffic side of things. For, for those that say it's not what it used to be, well, Covid stopped Iron Fest. And last year was a different type of Iron Fest, and I imagine the next year will be different again. If next year's event fails to deliver, then I see no reason why this council should continue to support. But I believe we owe them this opportunity. As far as their expressions of interest not being as flash or as detailed as some, I would say that. All they needed was one page and one word, and that's being Iron Fest, this is a proven event. And I'm excited at the fact that it's gonna happen again, but I, I don't think we should even entertain the idea of not supporting them. Thank you.
Councillor Marnie?
Uh, happy to second councillor Evangelitis's motion, um, I think most people know. My thoughts on Iron Fest and my support for it, um, I'm conscious that. We've determined as a councillor group a process, so we've got an active V I O, which hasn't made a decision. At this stage and, um, whether we need to go back to the drawing board after this process. And determine some of the tier-one events, um, clearly, I'd say the two. Outstanding events in the last lengthy period is Iron Fest and Halloween. Like, they're the things that people have brought into, uh, in our community, so I understand councillor Evangelitis's position. But I would allow it, the process just to complete. I understand there will be further communications with applicants, so I just, just wanna give. Due process its opportunity to play out, um. The traffic control plan, um, I, I'd like to understand this better of why. Each event at the showground has to prepare a individual traffic control plan. If a lot of people turn up in a lot of cars to the same location. Why isn't there an organisational traffic control plan that is provided for each party? I think there's other things we can also look at is our ability to use waivers. So the cost of the hire of the showground for restarts or startups. Um, I'd like us to think through some of those things, so. I've, I've seconded it because of, A, my support for Iron Fest, but also two, for the purpose of debate. Um, I enjoy listening to councillor Evangelitis's view line on a lot of things, um. But I, I feel we should allow a process that's closing out. To complete its pathway and I hope that part of these conversations with staff is with. Some of these key individuals in, in the proponents of these, these, uh, applications, um, so. I, I, while second here, I'm, I'm just saying, look, I think it'd be worth holding for another few weeks. Just to allow that, that process to complete. I'll leave it at.
Thank you councillor Marnie, uh, councillor Ring and councillor Fredericks.
Yeah, I'd like to move an amendment, please.
And your amendment is?
That council provides in principle support to Iron Fest. And refers the discussion to the events working party committee meeting Thursday, free July.
Do I have a second for that? Thank you councillor Goodwin, councillor Ring?
For the same reasons that councillor Marnie said, there's a due process going, we've gone out to a N E I O, it has to run its full course. There's a meeting on Thursday, I believe there'll be some presentations made and. Now, it comes down to, um, credibility and reputational damage. If we set criteria and they're not met, I'm sorry, but there's no ifs, buts or maybes. You either do it properly, you submit it and you provide all the information, or it's out the door, it's no different to a development application. We don't approve half-baked development applications, I'm not saying the thing from Iron Fest was half-baked. But if they don't meet the criteria and the requirements that we as councillors have set, then it's inappropriate to go and change it. We need due process to run its course, that's why I'm moving the, uh, the amendment, which echoes what councillor Marnie was talking about.
Thank you councillor Ring, councillor Goodwin?
Yeah, now it's coming back on Thursday, I'm pretty happy for it to come back to that, uh, um, yeah, nothing more or less to be said.
Thank you, any further debate?
Question, Mayor, in regards to the motion, I, I'd rather the council refers the discussion, I, I don't think it needs to have principal support at this stage. If it's going to a, a events committee on Thursday or whatever.
Uh, councillor Ring, are you?
Uh, look, I, I'm happy for it to, to be removed, I mean, we've provided in principle support in the past. But, look, I'm happy for it to be removed and just have it go straight to the, uh, events working party.
Okay, are you happy with that? Are you happy with that councillor Goodwin? Councillor Fredericks?
Uh, through you, Mayor, to Mister Elwood. Was there a specific reason why?
Was there a specific reason why it, Iron Fest wasn't suggested to receive part of that grant?
Uh, through yourself, Mayor. Uh, council received twenty-two, uh, expression of interest applications for event sponsorship. Uh, the criteria for assessment of those was made clear in the, uh, on the council's website calling for those expressions of interest. Uh, so, uh, the council, uh, events team evaluated those, uh, based on those criteria. And the Iron Fest, uh, application, uh, did not provide the information that was requested under a number of those criteria or did not meet them to the same level that other uh, expressions of interest did. The, uh, the working party at the time uh, determined that given, uh, the interest in Iron Fest, uh, that it would continue to be reviewed and uh, the leading, uh, leading ranked expression of interest applicants uh, have actually been approached to speak in support of their, uh, E I O's, uh, at this Thursday's uh, events working group as well. So that process was running.
Councillor Fredericks, are you happy with that?
Yeah, um, and just one more question. Does Iron Fest have the opportunity to alter their application to meet the criteria?
Good question.
Uh, through yourself, Mayor. Uh, Iron Fest have been offered the opportunity to, uh, speak to the working group, uh, this Thursday uh, on, in support of their application, uh, provide additional information, ask, uh, questions that councillors on the working group uh, may have, uh, as well. Uh, that can be done in person or over video link or the like as well.
Does that suffice, councillor Fredericks?
Yes, thank you.
Any further commentary? Did you wanna, you, you're happy to, yep, you're right. Any further commentary on the amendment? No, rather, uh, no, I'll put the amendment. Okay, I'll put the amendment. All those in favour? All those against? That's been carried. Uh, the amendment becomes the motion. I'll put that to you. All those, oh, sexually, I'll give you a write a reply, councillor Evangelitis, sorry.
Um, yeah, I, I find it strange that uh, someone could do a really schmick application and that holds more weight than a, a group that's delivered locally for many years. Um, so I, yeah, I find that bizarre. So, um, the reason I brought the notice of motion is because they were not considered. And obviously since then, they've been, um, invited to speak at the next meeting, so I'm happy for that. But the whole reason I brought the notice of motion is because they were not chosen.
Can, uh, no, we'll just leave it. So, thank you, councillor Evangelis. That's your write a reply. I'll put that to you. All those in favour of the amendment, which is now the motion? Councillors, can I see a hand? Thank you. Those against? That matters being carried. Thank you. Uh, business of great urgency. Is there any councillors with business of great urgency? No? Okay, we now, I need a recommendation that ca-
Yes.
Oh, yes, councillor.
This is a great urgency. Um, I've had several people, um, ask me about the three-tree subdivision for council. Could you tell me the estimated time of completion, please?
We might take that on, on notice, councillor Statham. Yeah, we'll bring that to you if you're okay with that. That's not considered urgent, but we will look into that for you. If there's no further matters, I need, I, I've got a recommendation here that council resolves to move into closed council to consider the confidential report as listed in the business paper. Can I please have someone move that?
I'll move it.
Thank you, councillor Fredericks. Can I have a second? Uh, councillor Ring? Have I put that to you? All those in favour? All those against? Declare that carried. We now go into closed council, please.
Thank you and welcome back. We've come back out of closed council. I'll now defer to the general manager who will go through the recommendations passed in closed council.
Apologies. Item 13.1 Confidential Report Code of Conduct. Council resolved that: One, council received the final investigation report relating to code of conduct breaches by councillor Tycehurst; and two, councillor Tycehurst to be formally censured for the identified breaches of the code of conduct under section 440g of the Local Government Act 1993; and three, council refer the matter to the Office of Local Government under the misconduct provisions of the Local Government Act 1993. 13.2 Confidential Main Street Revitalisation Grant Funding. The council resolved that: Council: One, note the findings of the management review undertaken on the communications in relation to the loss of the Building Better Regions grant fund for the revitalisation of the main street footpath; and two, note the actions identified and implemented to date to reduce the risk of grant funding being lost in future. Report 13.3 Confidential Woggin Road Reconstruction Continuation of Project Management Services. Council resolved: That Council: that council one endorse the continued engagement of Wasabi Group as project managers for the Wogan Road reconstruction project at an upper limiting fee of $2,091,541 excluding GST funded in full by the disaster recovery funding arrangements. And two allocate a budget of $2,091,541 to project management of Wogan Road entirely funded by DRFA grants and council's tripartite prepayment in the 2526 operational plan. And finally, 13.4 confidential Wogan Road reconstruction additional alignment option development. Council resolved that council one accept the contract variation proposal from WSP at an upper limiting fee of $1,065,000 excluding GST together with matching budget. Approve a project contingency of $159,750 excluding GST, 15% of upper limit project value together with matching budget. And three approve a complimentary budget of $106,500 excluding GST, 10% of upper limit project value to allow the existing specialist service providers contracts to continue can sorry to contribute to and re- review the design and cost outputs.
Thank you, General Manager. I now declare the meeting closed 10:36pm. Thank you. Travel safely home.